Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, December 14, 2023. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on March 31, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on March 31, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on March 31, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits, which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. And just one additional note, I understand the men's room up here is not working, so if anybody needs the men's room, you have to go downstairs. There's two, one at this end of the hall and one at the opposite end of the hall. You can get it through the stairs or the elevator. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano.
Present.
Mr. Greenfield's been excused. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Leggio's been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Councilman Gazer?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
And Chairman Babi?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Could we all stand and pledge allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops serving here and abroad? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We'll knock out these minutes real quick. Okay, first up is the regular meeting for September 7, 2023. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Gazer, Mercer, and myself. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Fred.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are received. Thank you.
Next up is September 21, 2023. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Gazer, and Mercer. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next up, October 5, 2023. Eligible voters Husar, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, Pike, and myself. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept minutes from October 5.
Second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, last but not least, October 19, 2023. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, and myself.
I'll make motion for minutes.
I'm sorry. I have Mr. Seaman on there, so hold on one minute.
Him too.
I just want to bear... No, Mr. Seaman was absent, so that's... It's correct.
Okay, so not him.
No. I'm sorry, now, do we have a motion?
I'll make motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, great. Correspondence?
Correspondence, I have a request from Vince Halloran at the application for Augustine Kim, which is on tonight. That's SD 3009. Be carried to the 18th with no further notice. I told him you're probably going to have to go to the 4th since we don't have our dates, and we can carry him for scheduling purposes only and then carry him again on the 4th.
Okay.
So we just need to make an announcement because he asked that the board take jurisdiction, so... No.
All right, the application of SD 3009, Augustine Kim, will be carried to the board's January 4 reorganization meeting for scheduling purposes only. It's likely to be carried to the January 18th, but just for scheduling purposes, our only official date next year so far is January 4. So all application documents will be available in Town Hall during regular business hours for inspection by the public.
I also have an email from Michael Butler, who is attorney for SP 1115 J A V E Howell LLC. He's asked that the Planning Board take jurisdiction over the application tonight and move the hearing date to the reorganization meeting on January 4. While he understands that moving it there may be for scheduling purposes only, he asked that it either be heard that night or listed on the next agenda, January 18. So I told him the same thing, it has to go for scheduling purposes only at this time.
Okay.
All right. The application of SP 1115 J A V E Howell LLC will be carried to the board's regularly-scheduled January 4 reorganization meeting for scheduling purposes only. All application documents are available in Town Hall during normal business hours and for the public inspection.
And I believe Mr. Junko is here for application SP 1117, D.R. Horton, Inc., and he asked if he could just address the board for a minute during correspondence.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman John Junko of Judano, Howell &amp; Cecil appearing on behalf of D.R. Horton for the Howell Ridge Project SP 1117. I understand that you're not going to be able to get to us tonight.
Yeah, we won't get to you tonight.
That there was... It was recommended, or it was said to me that you could put us on the agenda for January 18th.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's still carry it to the 4th for scheduling purposes.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to carry it to the 4th, and then you'll formally carry it.
Formally on the 18th, then. All right. So the application of SP 1117, D.R. Horton, Inc., NJ, Howell Ridge, will be carried to the board's regularly-scheduled January 4 meeting for scheduling purposes, which will likely be scheduled to January 18. All documents are available in Town Hall during normal business hours for public inspection.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Take care.
And then the only other thing is, I did send out meeting dates and asked everybody to look at them. There's really only... A Jewish holiday is Rosh Hashanah, October 2nd to the 4th, so October 3rd may be an And as far as master plan subcommittees, November 14th or 21st, you would have to pick one or the other. The 21st is the week probably of Lee, so you probably want the 14th. And Passover runs April 22nd to the 30th, and the master plan falls on April 25th. So I don't know if you want...
You could probably just cancel that master plan meeting.
Yeah, some of them...
Doing master planning, like...
Yeah.
Constantly, there's really no reason to have that meeting scheduled.
Okay. So, so the only issue then would be October 3 probably for Rosh Hashanah. I don't know if you want to go to the next... The next week would be the 10th, and then you'd have one on the 10th and the 17th.
Boxed.
I mean, you can save the date.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? I put a pin in it for now because, yeah, there's a lot of...
Just so we don't lose a date, we can advertise. Okay. This way I can get the resume ready for the reorg. Thank you.
Right, right, thank you.
Eileen, what... Hypothetically, what are we looking at at the 18th right now, as far as applications go?
January, a minor subdivision, D.R. Horton.
Okay.
And the... And the one other application which may not be heard.
Which may wind up before the zoning board.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
And Victory Road is still hanging out there, but January wasn't a good date for them anyway, so they're probably going to go February 3rd.
That was my question. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for correspondence.
That's it for correspondence.
Do we have any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Okay. All right. Here we go. Resolutions. First up, case number SD 3013, Bezadar LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion to memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next up, case number SD 3010, Samuel Nigor. Resolution granting minor subdivision approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make motion to memorialize.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next up, case number SD 3002, Frederick J. Hare. Extension of time for an additional 190 days. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next up, case number SP 1118 CR, Township of Howell. That's the capital plan review. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husar, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
Will make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Ordinance 023-35, resolution deeming ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number 0-23-36, resolution deeming ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself. Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, ordinance 0-23-37, resolution deeming the ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance 0-23-38, resolution deeming an ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield... Oh, excuse me. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 0-23-09, resolution deeming the ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
Make a motion memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance 0-23-40, resolution deeming the ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
Make a motion to memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 0-23-41, resolution deeming ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I know. Take a second. Ordinance 0-23-42, resolution deeming ordinance substantially consistent with the master plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm switching it up a little bit here. Case number SP 852A, Village Square at Howell LLC. It's a resolution for amended preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance relief. Eligible voters Husser, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
Make a motion to memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Ms... Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, case number SP 1110, Howell 360 LLC. Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, Pike, and myself. Mr. Chairman, before you ask for a motion, I'd like to ask a quick question of our council.
Sure.
So on this application, I'm looking at my notes, and there are a couple of items that the applicant asked for. And unfortunately, the link for this particular resolution, I had some difficulties with. And because of my work schedule, I just wasn't able to get ahold of Eileen to get it straightened out and get a copy of it. So is this something that we could maybe table? Eileen, and then I'm sure we're going to have a break at some point today. Maybe Eileen can get me a quick copy of it, take a quick look at it, and then we get back from that break. In between applications, we can come back to this one?
Uh, yeah, you could. It'd be up to the chairman if wants to put in another part of the schedule.
Okay. Yeah, that's not a problem. Thank you. Let me just circle that so I don't forget it. Okay, so we'll wait for that one. Next up is case number SD 2997A, Larrabee Realty LLC. Resolution granting amended preliminary and major final subdivision approval with ancillary variance relief. Eligible voters Husser, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next up, case number SP 1011A-2, Wenclere Real Estate LLC. Resolution granting amended preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, and Pike.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Case number SP 1107, New Jersey Ruckel Realty LLC. Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Seaman, Gazer, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion memorialize.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
And, well, no, it's not the last one. I'm just... Master Plan Reexamination Report. Resolution adopting the master plan reexamination as far as the township. Master Plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Husser, Tannenhouse, Gazer, Mercer, Pike, and myself.
Motion to memorialize.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
And last but not least, case number SP 1046A, Bank of America. Resolution granting amended site plan. Eligible voters Cristiano, Gazer, Mercer, and myself.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Need a drink of water? Had a nice run. Wow, I don't think ever... I've got a lot for one. I'm still going to circle back around on yours. Sorry. No. You know what, Brian? I wish... I wish I knew I had a time. If I knew I had a time. I... You know what? It's... I was hoping it would work here. Yeah. My bad, dude. Okay, next up, submission waivers. Okay, next up, submission waivers. Case number SP 1119, Squonkum Holdings LLC, preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design.
Good evening, Miss Chairmembers of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant.
You kind of know how we roll.
Right. Waiting for Laura.
All right. Laura, in the testimony you're about to provide, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have the submission waivers specifically in item three of our November 2nd, 2023 review letter. I do have one question for the applicant. Sal, do you know if you have any tree removal?
There's no, no, it's completely barren, the property.
So, given the nature of this application, essentially it's a vacant property. It's going to really be used for a contractor's yard, and it's two temporary buildings. I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. So, the board members understand it's not a major stormwater development, so it doesn't prompt those regulations. And I was concerned about tree removal hearing. There's no tree removal. I take no exception for the purposes of deeming it complete.
Okay. Anybody got anything?
No.
No, it's just submission waivers. So then I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve submission waiver case number SP dash 1119.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next up, case number SP 1120, Carmine Caruso, preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dennis Collins appearing on behalf of the applicant. On a quick study, I defer to Ms. Newman.
Any testimony you're about to provide, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, similarly, the submission waivers are in item three of our November 3rd, 2023 review letter. I would note that since issuing this letter, the applicant has provided, item 13 has provided, and item 85 and item 52. So, those three items have been provided. I take no exception to the balance of the items being waived for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions, comments? Then I will entertain a motion. Make a motion for submission waiver case number SP dash 1120.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday, and we'll see, the way you run your, all those items on your agenda, I'll see you in 2025, it looks like.
Something like that.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Take care.
Nice holiday.
All right. Last but not least, case number SP 1113, 271 Adelphi LLC, preliminary, final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alexandra Servideo with JJJ Law Firm. I will follow suit and defer to Ms. Newman.
Before you do, could you just spell your last name for me?
Yes, S.E.R.V.I.D.I.O.
Thank you.
In the testimony you're about to provide, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an October 20th, 2023 review letter. Submission waivers are specifically itemized in item three, and I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming this application complete.
Anybody? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve case number 1113.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Oh, you have to make sure it's on the record, please, Jackie.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay, first application is case number SP 1083, 6679 Route 9 NJ LLC. It's for an extension of time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. Kenneth Pape of the firm, Hilebrand Pape. On behalf of your applicant, this was the repurposing of the old Aldi building on Route 9. We came before the board during the pandemic virtual hearings in 2021, and the board granted approval to repurpose the building to a medical office building. They are, I provided an outline of the status of approvals. Our client has worked on the approvals but hasn't completed them. The gentleman who owns the property has entered into a contract to sell it to someone who's now ready to finish the approvals and build the building. It's subject to the board granting the extension of the approval that we request. The approvals expired, the protection of the approvals expired in August of this past summer, and we're asking the board to grant two one-year extensions of the application so that we can complete the approval process and get this building built.
Is anybody, when you say two one-year, you mean one year for the six months to now? So, it's actually 18 months, kind of?
No, it goes August to August.
It's, we're asking August 23 to August 25, Mr. Chairman.
It's retroactive.
August 23 is behind us.
There's like 18 left. That's what I meant.
Fully, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
You're right.
Yes.
That's why I just.
Thank you.
I have, I have no, is it, we have to open it up to the public?
No.
No. Not for extension of time?
No.
Yeah. And I'll make a motion to approve the extension time.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gazer?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Bivai?
Yes.
Thank you all. Good night.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next up is case number SD 2998, Wadsworth Development LLC. It's a Whispering Woods hearing for preliminary major subdivision approval.
Mr. Chair, there is a alternate attorney here stepping in for Mr. Herbert.
Okay.
But he asked that I please call him. He would like to call in and listen, and so I'm gonna just call him and.
Okay.
Well, do you have those dividends on a P, like a USB?
I don't. I think we may have sent those, but I do have shown down ones also.
Hi, Mike. It's Eileen. On the other line? Sure, no problem. All right, thank you. Bye.
Mr. Chairman, may I pass these out?
Sure.
Or do you want to wait to have it introduced?
We can wait till you're introduced.
Hold on one minute. I'm gonna try and see if we can get you on here, all right? Mr. Herbert, can you hear us?
I can hear you, Eileen.
Okay, perfect. We can hear you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Alexis Smith, an attorney with Parker McKay. As Eileen has already mentioned, Mr. Herbert couldn't be here tonight because of illness. He is here virtually in some capacity, but I'm here as a substitute. As you already know, we are here for a Whispering Woods hearing, which is a fancy way of saying a public hearing on a settlement agreement between the board and applicant. Tonight we have here the applicant's engineer, Mr. Hopkins.
You don't have to stand at podium. Those things are microphones on the table.
That's okay. I'll sit down. I'll let him get off. Thank you, though. I sit all day, too. So, as a preliminary matter, Mr. Chairman, would you like Mr. Hopkins to go through his credentials, or since he has already presented before this board, accept him as an expert, whatever you would prefer?
Yeah, usually we have them.
Put a little bit on the record.
Yeah, we'll put it on the record.
Absolutely, no problem.
Yeah.
No problem.
And I'll sit down here.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Walter Hopkins. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I have a bachelor's science from Drexler University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, and all of my credentials is both an engineer and a planner in tonight's.
And we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. In the testimony you're about to provide, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so at this point, we'll start with Mr. Herbert, and just go through the application and get them out.
So, I do have a color rendered version of the site plan. I thought that we had emailed it in advance, and maybe we had.
October 11?
I'm sorry?
It's dated October 11?
It is, yes.
I have it listed as A 6 under.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Great, okay, so this. So, the site, just to refresh the board's memory, it's been over a year. It's a 20.06 acre site. It's at the corner of Ramtown Greenville Road and Michelle Court. Also, Kozminsky Way runs along the one side of the property as well. The address is 238 Ramtown Greenville Road, also known as Block 3 Lot 25, and it is located in your AREE 2 zone. Just to orient the board also to the location, to the north is Ramtown Elementary. To the south is Michelle Boulevard, a subdivision. To the east are single-family approvals for a single-family residential development, and to the west is the middle school. The property has a single-family residential home on it, various buildings, chicken coops throughout driveways and gravel, and then there's a significant portion of wooded area on the remainder of the property. We're here before you this evening to present detailed plans which are consistent with the plans and the settlement agreement between the township and the applicant. What's proposed are 10 roughly one-acre lots plus an open space lot of just over eight acres. Of the 10 lots, nine will be new homes, and those are the ones that are colored with brown on the rendering, and then the existing single-family home, which fronts on Ramtown Greenville Road, will remain. It's proposed to demolish all of the other structures on site, and that also is consistent with the settlement agreement. Access to this development, as you can see, will be a direct connection to Ramtown Greenville Road with a new RSIS compliant road to be owned and maintained by homeowners association. There'll be curb and sidewalk along both sides. Each home will have a minimum of a 75-foot wide, excuse me, 75-foot long driveway with a two-car garage, which will be RSIS compliant. There was a comment in Ms. Newman's letter regarding Lot 25.08 and need for relief for a driveway setback. We don't want to have to request that, so we'll relocate that driveway to eliminate the need for that relief. There's also proposed to be a minimum of 100-foot buffer along Ramtown Greenville Road and Michelle Boulevard. There's a 50-foot buffer around the remainder of the site. There are 456 trees to be planted throughout the site, including reforestation and supplemental trees. I believe your environmental commission had raised an issue or concern about the fact that we're showing trees, as you can see, kind of superimposed in the wooded area along Michelle Boulevard. We're not proposing to knock down any trees, to put trees up. What that is, is through discussions with your tree expert in an attempt to kind of reforest and reestablish the sparse areas of the existing woods and kind of complement and enhance that wooded area. There's also 26 street trees that are proposed, and if I could just take a step back, the 456 trees that are proposed, that's 128 more than the last time we were before you with the previous application. There's 26 street trees, which is eight more than the last time that we were before you.
So, Walter, can I just interrupt you?
Sure.
Looking at the aerial photograph, there is absolutely no way you're planting 400 trees in that buffer. So, like, let's get real. Where exactly are these trees going? I mean, I know you don't want to pay into the fund, but like, I mean, like, there's absolutely no physical way you could plant 400 trees in that area without taking trees out. So, explain that to me.
So, not all 456 are in the buffer. They're interspersed throughout the site. This was, wasn't, this was developed in conjunction with the tree expert.
Yeah, she's saying right here.
Okay, okay.
I had spoken with him about providing extra trees, but we did not agree on 400 trees.
Okay.
It's just not, you're just gonna, the tree will not live in all that shade.
Okay.
It's just not gonna be possible.
So, I think you need to relook at it.
Okay.
And you need to reconcile the fact that you're probably gonna pay.
So, we had intended to pay. There was a balance that was due, and certainly whatever is required, we will.
Yeah, because I don't need you to plant trees that are gonna die because they're underneath the canopy of existing trees just to avoid paying into our fund. Like, I think you need to be realistic here, and whatever Shari says is what we're gonna go with.
I understand, and I apologize. That wasn't the intent to try to reduce the payment. It was just the opposite, to get as many as possible, and I apologize if there was a miscommunication between our office and Ms. Spiro. So, we will certainly, that number will slide to a larger contribution as the number that we agreed to is appropriate to get on site is reduced.
Can we also talk about the variance you need for the open space lot?
Yes.
So, they're required to provide 50% open space, but they're not, and they're also providing one extra lot than they came in with before. So, you're at 40% when you need 50%, and you have one extra lot than you did before. And I get it's a Whispering Woods, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Honestly, it's a question that I have, why, why we're agreeing to one extra lot when we're not where we need to be on the open space lot?
So.
Jen, you got me confused. So, if this is a Whispering Woods application.
Yep.
And this is the plan that was brought.
I understand that.
And agreed to under the Whispering Woods, doesn't variances and other things just that, isn't it just automatically kind of grandfathered in because of the Whispering Woods?
No.
No, it can be amended here as long as the.
They need a variance.
Is agreed state of condition.
So, at least 50% of the track needs to be in the open space lot, and they have 40%. And when they came to us originally, there were one less lot. So, I don't really, I get it, it's a Whispering Woods, but explain to me why we should give you one extra lot when you're not giving us the percentage of open space that you're supposed to.
Can I, I have a question about this as well.
Yeah.
If this is a settlement agreement, right, and it was settled upon what was supposed to be there, who makes these, like, I'm still unclear how this is all working. So, if something was.
In theory, you guys agreed to a settlement.
Right, so that, and this isn't it, correct? Or this is?
I don't know.
Yeah, this is it. But no, what we're asking is, if we, who negotiated the?
Who's we?
Yeah, who's we? Who negotiated the settlement?
I think Ron did.
It'd be Ron, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Based upon our input. So then. Based upon our input. So then.
If I may, just to frame it, right, the board's gonna weigh this, but this plan is consistent. I understand Ms. Beam's comment, right? This is one additional lot from the plan that you denied, but it is consistent with the settlement plan that you agreed upon. And I think the negotiation was that there's additional fees that are required to, or costs, to extend this road, to extend the sanitary, to extend the sewer, and this was what was required to make that work between the applicant and the municipality.
Good, fair enough. Thank you.
But I also want to just add to that, like, going back to the tree situation, Chair, I'm sorry to keep hearing you on the spot, but you're also clearing trees in addition to what we discussed for these basins, right, which go, get factored into the tree situation, correct?
Yeah, it would be, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, she, right, so that's something, because Laura had brought that out in her letter.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the trees, I mean, any decision you guys make with respect to this, I understand the settlement. I'm not arguing about that, but the tree, clearing the tree fund situation has to be a condition of anything you guys do in satisfaction of Shari, which right now I don't think we're at.
Great. Now, that part I understand.
Yeah, 100%.
That, absolutely.
So, just to reiterate, we are totally in agreement with that, those conditions, and that, and it really, I hope I'm not oversimplifying, but it's a sliding scale, so either they go on site or they pay.
Yep.
And we decide what, we defer to Shari's discretion.
The number's the number.
And then that number goes.
That'll be a hard number.
It's a black and white number.
In full agreement with that.
Yep, full agreement.
So, there's a, as Ms. Beam alluded to, there's a stormwater management system that, actually, between the application that was denied and now, new stormwater management rules were brought into effect by DEP, and we are now subject to those. So, a benefit to this application is that we are now, this has been designed in accordance with the new, more stringent NJDEP rules, which your ordinance also kind of mimics. There was a question in Ms. Newman's letter about access because the stormwater management system will be privately owned and maintained by the homeowners association, but of course, we will grant an easement for emergency access or maintenance as required. There's also roof leader system and infiltration basins. There was a comment in Ms. Newman's letter. We had proposed some drywells along the rear of the lots that back up to Michelle Boulevard to kind of, it was kind of a belt and suspenders type of situation to reduce the runoff. There's a kind of a technicality in the rules that the drywell that we selected, the BMP that we selected, isn't appropriate for that. So, we're going to work with her office and come up with a different BMP, possibly a sand filter, that will achieve the same thing but still meet the DEP rules. There was also a comment in Ms. Newman's letter about providing an emergency access overflow. The basins are designed to infiltrate water into the ground, and if for some reason they don't, they aren't able to, they fail, there's an issue, she suggested that we provide an emergency overflow to connect into the Michelle Boulevard system so that it doesn't overflow over land, and we would agree, we would be in agreement to doing that as well. As I had mentioned before, public and water and sewer being extended to the site off of Ramtown Greenville Road, and there will be street lighting as well. I believe there was a comment in Ms. Newman's letter about needing to tweak the lighting to comply with your township ordinances, and we would agree to do that. That's really an overview of the, of the application. I'm sure that your professionals have additional comments, but I can tell you that the remainder of the letters, we would be in agreement to conforming with and addressing and complying with the rest of the comments in those letters.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, and it may have been testified to and I missed it, but the new roadway, is that gonna be public or private?
It'll be private by the HOA. That's actually a part of a condition of the settlement agreement.
And does the roadway have adequate spacing for street parking?
On one side, and I believe your office suggested signage for the other side, which we would agree to.
And also, I didn't hear anything about, I know we spent time at this at the initial hearing, but the phase two assessment and the stained soil.
So, my office isn't handling that, but it's been reported to me that it has, a case has been opened with DEP and that we will forward any future information onto the town.
And you agree to comply with all items in our technical engineering review?
Yes, I do. Well, with one, I don't want to, I prefer not to do this in front of the board, but there is one question or suggestion to add inlets along Ramtown Greenville Road, which in principle, we're really not opposed to. Just the issue is that, as you've identified, there's a kind of a long stretch there without any inlets, and I'm just concerned that it could be a significant amount of runoff that would be brought into our site and into our stormwater management system, which could increase the size of the system and the tree removal.
Mr. Chairman, we're having issues in town relative to what basins, their ability to function, and overland runoff on road. So, the suggestion was made to just try to capture some additional runoff, given the gutter flow lengths on Ramtown Greenville Road. I think there are other alternatives that can be considered, curb cuts, something to get water off the road. I recommend that that be reviewed with our township engineer's office, and whatever he recommends should be what's implemented, whether that's inlets that conveys it into the site or curb cuts, but the goal is to capture as much runoff as we can.
What does a, what does a curb cut mean, and how does that, does that, how would that work for this site?
A curb cut would just give the runoff a place where if, instead of continuing to flow down the gutter, it would be able to flow overland.
Got it.
Into the site.
And then kind of absorb into the land as it goes?
Yes.
Okay. And you have no problem with that?
No, no. We agree that.
And what's the worst-case scenario? They gotta make the basins a little bit bigger, and we gotta take down a couple more trees?
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna capture that substantial amount of runoff that's gonna severely alter the design, which is why my preference would be that inlets be added. I'm happy to defer to Mr. Yost in the township, because I don't think it's gonna have a substantial impact, but I'd like to have his input as well.
Okay, so, again.
We're in agreement, of course.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Laura?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing.
Okay. Anybody from?
I just, can I just go back on the tree removal? I did have in the letter a comment. So, on one of your sheets, it indicates 5.11 acres of clearing, but the other sheet, sheet two and six, indicates 6.05, so that's an acreage difference. And then with the replanting, the reason why this image doesn't look like 450 trees, I, there was only 200 on there. I know your number say 456, but there's not, you know, that many trees showing on the plan.
Okay.
So, there's some discrepancy that has to be worked out on that.
It is six, and we will work all those numbers out. It is six, and we will work all those numbers out.
But in fairness, I mean, if you have two hundred roughly shown on the plans, instead of four fifty-six, you may owe closer to five hundred trees by way of contribution, correct?
Understood, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Mercer.
Yes, no removal, it's done by the association?
Um-
The road's private.
The road's private, it's up to you guys.
I guess, yeah.
Is there any formal detailed timeline to how long the HOA will be responsible for the roadway?
I assume, or in perpetuity, I don't-
That's, yeah, that's what I would assume, too.
Yeah.
What's our attorney say?
You can make that a condition, I don't think that's an unreasonable condition-
I've learned not to assume.
-is what we expected.
What's our attorney say about HOA's-
What was the question?
It's their road forever, right?
Right.
Yeah. Well, in fairness, though, I mean, yes, that's what they're agreeing on the record. It doesn't stop a homeowners association down the line to petitioning the town, but it would have to comply with the municipal standards at that time, and would be subject to all of the ordinances in effect at that time.
Right. With the private road, do they have to grant-
Title thirty-nine?
Title thirty-nine?
We should request that, yes.
So you guys are willing to do that?
Okay.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'm just gonna say it so it's been said, I realize it's a settlement and, you know, we're trying to get along and all that good stuff, I don't love the fact that we're giving an extra lot now, just because costs to make improvements are expensive. I don't love that we're bending that much.
I don't disagree.
Just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah. Okay, where do we go from here? I'm gonna- Open it public? If nobody else has anything, we'll open it up to the public. So, yeah, if anybody from the public has any questions, comments, et cetera, for the applicant, please come forward. I feel like I'm sitting on a floor. All right, seeing that nobody from the public's coming forward. I just have one last question, and- We're gonna close the public portion. Now, so during the original application, you know, water storm runoff and all that stuff was a big deal, we know that their basin on Michelle Avenue is, at least they were claiming it, it's failing, so really no, because we didn't have any expert witness, but that's what they were talking about. They also made some mentions and even showed a picture of the middle school's basin failing and actually coming across Michelle Boulevard, that one, I can't disagree with the guy at a photo. I'm assuming that this basin setup is actually an even better design than the original, and this is actually gonna capture a large majority of the water, and do we know what kind of year storm this is proposing to collect, whether you win a hundred-year, five-hundred-year?
It is proposed to be the hundred-year storm. There's other precautions that we've worked with your engineer, the overflow, we've also designed it for the maximum amount of impervious that's not proposed today, so we've tried to kind of do the belt and suspenders on this.
So, so it's an, would you say it's an improvement from, on a stormwater management from something that we got, was presented previously?
I mean, so the board members recall, we had pervious pavement driveways before, and we had an elongated basin, we had, I mean, it was still an infiltration design and swells, I mean, this, as was testified to, had to comply with the newer stormwater management regulations than prior. It's designed to withstand the hundred-year storm, I think previously they oversized an infiltration basin.
Yeah, I mean, I know some of it, too, is, you know, some of the complaints that were- I'm just trying to get on the record that this looks to me, not being a stormwater expert, this looks to me like a better project.
I don't agree.
Is there any way to quantify that?
I don't necessarily agree.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
I think, you know, you're looking at it because you're seeing three different detention areas, that's a function of the newer stormwater management regulations, which are limiting the drainage area which can go to a basin. So, I mean, if you look at it from that perspective, it's more in line with current regulations, but by way of what it's holding and the reduction requirements, that has not changed.
But I think also to get what Brian was saying is, this is addressing almost everything that the residents on Michelle Boulevard were against, because they didn't want driveways on their street, they wanted a separate road.
Correct, if that's the question, yes, there's no-
Actually, this answers and all of their concerns, and clearly it did, because nobody from Michelle Boulevard is here like they were prior to come and tell us any different, so I guess that would be a better way to-
But that's a different scenario than saying this is a better drainage design. Like, the design addresses the concerns of the residents with respect to the driveways, et cetera.
Right.
But I think what Laura's saying is the drainage is the same.
Right, okay.
Minus the fact that it complies now with the newer regulations.
Right, but it is, but it ultimately addresses all the concerns of the-
The design absolutely addresses-
Overall, addresses the concerns. Okay, I think that's kind of where I'm- So is there an opportunity, then, to make it better so that, okay, that's it? That's-
It's it, this is a settlement. We've agreed to a settlement, this is where we're at.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that settlement, John? Because you said they agreed to fifty percent open space?
You guys agreed, okay, so this board approved a settlement.
Of fifty percent?
Forty percent.
Oh, forty, okay, just wanted to-
This design is representative of the settlement that this board approved.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to check, thank you.
Yeah.
Just before you do anything else, this originally came in as Wadsworth Development LLC, and it was gonna be called Ramtown Estates. There is a Ramtown Estates further down on Ramtown-Greenville Road, so the name definitely has to be changed when it's built. And I did talk to Mr. Herbert about that.
Okay, so you're gonna handle that, right? Sure, yeah.
Yes, yes, we're gonna change it to Luxor.
Okay.
Luxor?
Luxor. L-U-X-O-R?
I mean, if that's the biggest con-
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure it was on the record that they could-
Sure, oh no, you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, any other comments or questions from the board members? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve case number SD dash two nine nine eight.
I'll second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yeah.
And Chairman Babi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Take care. I'm gonna take a-
Thank you. Bye.
Five-minute recess.
It had to be seven, we have to get on staff.
Seven minutes.
All right. Back on the record, Paul has, I guess for the record, Paul has-
Cited his leave?
Left for the evening, so I'll be taking over as chair. So, the next application is case number SP one 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 one, Kametz Inc.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alferi on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a conditional use approval for a trade contractor's business. We're in the HD four zone and the trade contracting use, is a conditional use permitted in that zone. Mr. Plaskonka, who will testify momentarily, will testify that we meet all of the conditions of the ordinance and therefore are at the appropriate board. It's a small, Mr. Kametz and his wife are present in here this evening if you have questions of them after we get through our testimony, but it's a small business located in a relatively small building, there's about two thousand square feet of storage space in the building, and it's gonna be owner occupied with their business. John Plaskonka is our professional, and we'd request that he be sworn in.
All right. In the testimony you're about to provide, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah.
John J. Plaskonka, personal engineer in Alabama, New Jersey. I've been before the board before, I've been before many boards in Monmouth, Ocean, Middle South County for the last fifty years.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
And Mr. Plaskonka, we're gonna be referring to the colored site plan that's up on the screen, that is A twenty-two?
A twenty-three.
A twenty-three, okay.
And we'll make this other one A twenty-four, which was emailed to make, the architectural rendering.
Okay, so John, first, can you describe for the board the use that the applicant is proposing for this property?
Sure, the services provided by my client are specialized in that he provides directional drilling at different locations throughout New Jersey. If you want to cross the parkway with a turnpike with a pipe, you don't dig up the lane, you drill underneath the highway, and he does that directional drilling for airports, for the turnpike, for the parkway, for the utility authorities throughout New Jersey, doing that for a long time. It's a really specialized company, so if you do need directional drill, you go to see Kevin, and he'll take care of you, he's worked for me a couple of times, done some good jobs. This is about a five-acre piece of property on Route thirty-three, it's about two hundred feet from Yellowbrook Road, which is to the east, and there's single-family homes to our left or to our east and behind us, and to the right is the H, C four zone also. So we have commercial to our right, residential to our left, and we have a proposed building that's about nine thousand square feet that will be used for his facilities, and it will also provide for his parking in the front, the driveway to the back, and storage in the rear of the-
There's also wetlands to the rear, Mr. Plaskonka?
Yeah, you're looking at the area in the left rear corner are wetlands, there is a detention basin just to the right of the wetlands, then the storage area in light gray, and then the entryway from Route thirty-three and the building off to the left. All along the residential homes is a fifty-foot wide buffer that's planted from one end to the other, from the wetlands to Route thirty-three. It's a six-foot high berm with an eight-foot fence for privacy, along with that berm for the residential uses to our east. On the right side, there's a small landscaped area next to the commercial zone, and then we have landscaping along the side and the front. The area that's being utilized in the gray has two parking spaces for vehicles to be repaired, has an area to store his pipe that he uses on the jobs, it has material equipment storage, nine spaces for pickup trucks and trailers, and outdoor material equipment storage area, and thirteen spaces on the right side for the fleet vehicles. So we've arranged those things based on his operation, and he operates basically six days a week from about eight AM in the office until six PM, and then in the yard area, he operates from seven AM to five PM for the employees who work in the yard to load the-
So, I'm sorry, I cannot hear a single word he's saying, literally, not a single word.
This is not working?
I mean, you're just mumbling, I can't hear you.
Let me go back, the office hours- Can you hear me? Is that better?
Yeah, now I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. The storage yard has two spaces for parking vehicles for repair, a pipe storage area on the left side for storage of his pipe, outdoor material equipment storage.
So what kind of equipment are we talking about?
Usually he has a-
Well, Mr. Kametz is here, so he can supplement with those details.
I'm just asking, are we talking vehicles? Because typically we don't allow outdoor storage of vehicles on gravel. Typically, we require the outdoor storage of vehicles on concrete, in case they like leak anything, it won't penetrate into the ground. So what are we talking about in terms of equipment?
We do have vehicles parked back there, Jim, we do have nine pickup trucks with trailers, and we have thirteen fleet vehicles that we were asked to show where they'd be parked at, but the actual outdoor equipment, I'll have to defer to Mr. Kametz. The property is served by a well and septic, we recently had new testing done for the septic, which was the Board of Health from the county, and they found that the soils were good, no water table, K four soils.
So, I mean, have we moved on from the storage? I'm sorry, I don't, I was not prepared to move on from that.
I'm sorry?
I'm not okay with vehicle storage on gravel, so like, can we go back to that? I think that if you're storing vehicles that could potentially drip, whatever, antifreeze, oil, whatever, it needs to be on concrete.
But what was the purpose of the gravel? I mean, is it, is it-
It's cheaper.
Is it cheaper, or is it just that we don't have enough impervious coverage?
No, they've calculated that into their pervious coverage, it has nothing to do with it.
So if they've concreted the whole thing, they, their basin, everything else still works?
Correct, I mean, obviously I'll ask Laura, but like, that area was calculated as impervious, but we don't typically allow vehicle storage on gravel, because, and you know, and then it's compounded by the fact that there's wetlands on the site, so it could potentially be negative impact there. I don't think we should move forward until we get this resolved, but-
I'll take it another step further, we also have where other applicants with heavy machinery and so forth, if it comes back with lots of dirt or mud, or say it's paving, I don't know if this is or isn't, but you know, where they may have other things in there, you don't want rainwater to kind of wash it away, we have that to be covered, covered parking, so that that stuff is further protected from any rain.
This is an open yard, which I don't take exception to the open yard, but I do have concerns about storing vehicles on gravel.
And the applicant, who I just called up, has no issue paving the area where the vehicles will be-
Paving is not cutting it, Sal, concrete. Because it will eat through the asphalt, it has to be concrete.
He said, okay.
So the answer is we'll provide concrete pavement for the areas where vehicles are being stored.
And then the material that you're storing out there, you're committing that it's not gonna be stored at higher than ten feet, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, John, you left off with the well and septic, and you were going forward, but before you leave, the wetlands that you referred to in the left-hand rear corner, they've been identified through an LOI from the NJDEP, is that correct?
That's correct, they're bound back behind the detention facility in the left rear corner, and they're being maintained as is with the required buffer.
Go ahead, continue, please.
We do seek some design waivers, there's no lighting in the rear, there are six lights up front around the building and the entryway, but the back, since it's just employees only, there is no lighting, maybe some security lighting will provide, but nothing is shown at this time, so we're asking for a waiver. The driveway entry is thirty foot wide, the ordinance indicates twenty-five feet, we're five feet wider because of the large trucks coming in and out, we need the bigger entryway, and NJDOT has approved the entryway, we do have a permit from the DOT on that.
Excuse me, can you just go back to the lighting for a second? I missed that. What variance do you require? Waiver. I'm sorry, we- We're not providing parking, we're not providing lighting in the rear storage area. Anytime someone's not putting lighting in, I don't see that as a problem, what about ordinance would require you to put lighting in?
There's minimum put candles for the entire site.
Huh?
We have minimums for the entire site, when they don't put lighting in, we don't need the minimums.
I don't have a problem with not lighting the storage area, but it's the-
Okay, I was just trying to figure out why you-
Yeah, so overall.
You'll have, you have no complaint.
The, there's no sidewalk proposed for Route thirty-three, there is no sidewalk on Route thirty-three, but we would pay into the trust on the sidewalk of eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars based on your ordinance requirements. Also, there's trees being removed, so have- requirements. Uh, also, there's trees being removed, it's a heavily wooded site, so that there would be a payment of $46,400 into your township tree fund for the replacement of the trees, besides the trees we're putting on the property.
And speaking of the trees, um, uh, Shari has, uh, still has issues with the, the types of plantings and other issues relating to that. And you've agreed as a condition of approval to work with her, to her satisfaction, on the landscaping and plantings?
Yeah, we have, met with Shari at the site. Uh, she said, try to save certain trees. We, we'll have to have them located to show them exactly where they're at. We'll return to her and show her what we have, and try to save as many as we can within the confines of this plant.
Right, so, um, let me just jump in on that. So we had a meeting a while back. There's some large Norway spruce trees towards the front, left corner of the property. Um, there's also a large sycamore in the front by the house. Um, and I had asked for those to be specifically located, so then we could review to see if, uh, you know, any minor changes would allow us to save some of those trees. But that hasn't been provided yet, so I, you know, I don't know if those trees can or not be saved.
Shari, can I ask a question about the trees?
Fine. Your mic on?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. The trees in the front of the site, especially the ones that will be closer to the entrance of the ingress and egress, is there any concern that those trees over time may cause any type of blockage? If we've got large trucks, the, the height of the driver is going to be a heck of a lot higher than a regular car, and is, will, will they have any, any issues with sight lines up and down Route 33 there?
I mean, it does show, I think, those site triangles on there, on the plan, and they are well behind it.
Okay.
But I will say, just in terms of what Shari had discussed about saving the trees, that would impact the ability, like, they would need relief for the buffer in that corner of the, like, what is it? The, the left corner front of the property? Because if Shari feels that those trees should be saved, then we wouldn't clear them, put the berm up, and stuff like that in accordance with our buffer requirement. So it kind of needs to be resolved in order for us to understand if a variance, that's a variance, a variance is necessary for that portion of the buffer, which if Shari wants the trees saved, I'm perfectly supportive of that relief, but we need to understand whether that's the case or not.
Okay.
Well, we will locate them. We'll go see Shari, and if we have to come back to the board, we'll come back to the board.
I don't think we can act on the application, quite frankly, because you would need a variance for the buffer. So we can't give you an approval, or whatever the board wants to do, without knowing it. And quite honestly, how long ago did you ask for this? So like, this has been hanging for a while. So it, there's, there's no reason why it hasn't happened yet. I, you know, like, I, I get that the balance of the application is pretty straightforward, but I don't know how you guys can act on an application when we don't know if a variance is necessary or not.
Well, the board could grant just preliminary and have them come back for the final.
Yes, we could do that. You're right. Absolutely. We could do preliminary only, and then you could come back after you get this resolved for final. And if there's a variance necessary, we could deal with it at that point.
We agree.
John, moving, and we, as Mr. Plisakka said, we have no issue with that. Um, moving on, this, I mentioned at the beginning that this was a conditional use.
Ma'am, I'd be picking you. Can you guys hear him in the back? You can? No? Okay, sorry.
Okay. I mentioned, uh, the conditional use and the trade contractor standards. Can you, I, I don't think you need to go point to point unless Jennifer wants to hear point to point, but can you stipulate that all of the conditional use standards are being satisfied and met, and no relief is being required?
That's correct.
Well, you can't say that. Because one of the conditional use requirements is compliance with the buffer. So you cannot make that statement.
Well, the buffer we have...
No, you don't.
We have a buffer.
If you're saving, not for nothing, John, if you're saving those trees, so this is a big issue because it's jurisdictional. Compliance with our, it's Section 63, which is our buffer requirement, is a condition of the conditional use. You don't comply with it, you don't comply with the conditions, you're at the zoning board. So I honestly don't even know how we get to preliminary until we have this issue resolved, to be perfectly honest. So the issue needs to be resolved in order to determine whether or not you're going to comply with it, or...
Can you point to, can you please point on the screen, what, where this, this buffer and tree thing is that was, it's, it's in...
The issue is in the front, right?
Right corner, yeah.
Yeah, it's because of the residence that's to the side of it?
Cause our, our requirements say you need a 50-foot buffer if you're adjacent to a residential zone or use. That's a house.
Right.
So they're required to put it there. If they're going to save the trees, and they're not going to comply with the buffer requirements...
Because they can't build the berm to, to...
Then they need a variance, which then kicks them to the zoning board.
And we think there's a reason to save the trees?
They're, you know, they're mature trees up front.
So aren't we creating the buffer if they want to tear them all down?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
So I think that this issue, quite frankly, which, in my humble opinion, they were out there when it was hot outside, so it's been months and months, should be addressed and decided before the board takes action on the application.
Fair enough.
Because if they're going to save the trees, and they're not going to comply with the buffer, they're at the wrong board. We don't even have jurisdiction.
Well, and, and, I mean, I don't have an issue trying to work it out, but we were, we're not stipulating tonight that we're going to agree to go to the zoning board.
I agree. But I do think we need to work that out.
I'm, I'm not going to debate that. I can't debate what happened in the past. All I know is that we're not going to create a D variance and a U.S. variance because someone wants to save one tree. We'll, but we'll look at it. I, I don't know the extent of it. I really can't comment beyond that.
But I, I guess my, my question is, if, if we don't have that answer, we don't even know if you guys should be in front of us, right?
We probably should, like, put a pin in this and then, like, work this out. And I, and I agree, Sal, I agree with you, right? You have the right to cut the tree down. We're not saying you don't. But we need to get this resolved, and, you know, she brought this up months and months ago. It still has not been resolved. It needs to be discussed and resolved one way or the other before I feel like you guys can take any action, because we may or may not have jurisdiction.
I, I agree. And I don't know if anybody else has. I mean...
I, I don't, I just have one other question.
Sure.
The application in front of us, is this for cutting down all the trees and putting a buffer up?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else have any input?
Well, so, Mr. Chair, if you want to stop, that's fine. I think there might be some members from the public here. We'd at least like to give them a chance to participate.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and number two is, um, Shari, this could all be done in the winter, right? We don't have to wait for... Okay, good.
Okay. Well, I, I guess my question is, I mean, it's putting us in a weird spot, right? Cause we don't even know if this should be in front of the planning board or zoning board. So does it go hard to take comment from the public?
I think it's a good idea, because the comments from the public are going to be what they are regardless of where they are.
But we're allowed to...
Absolutely. And I think that it's, it will help the applicant to, you know, figure out what they want, what the, if and when they need to do anything. So I think it's a good idea.
Have the planning board humans after me at night.
The only question I have for, optimistic, it's going to stay here. We have some new ordinances about hiding stuff in the back, such as auto, like, I know auto body shops, you have to have, and mechanic shops, we have to have buffers and fences and gates so that, so that no one from the highway can see the stuff in the back. Is this, do we have an ordinance that covers this in the updates?
So the trade contractor ordinance is relatively new. I think it was adopted, Sal, what, last year?
Yeah.
So those items, the conditions were identified. This is not a permitted use as of right. It's a conditional use with conditions. So those types of things were evaluated and incorporated into the conditional use. So they're here assumably compliant with the conditions and...
So we have the screening then, because it's a conditional use?
We have an eight-foot-high fence...
Correct.
Along both sides.
Okay.
And tied into the building, uh, so that you couldn't see through to the...
What's that fence material proposed to be?
It's a, it's a chain link fence with the, with the slats.
Slats on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I believe we want to stay with that buffer. I mean, if we find one tree in that buffer, for us to go to the zoning board, uh, we're going to, I'm sure I'm going to talk to Shari about it. We're going to argue not to save one tree, because everyone wants this 50-foot buffer next to residential, six-foot-high, eight-foot fence, plant it. We did that for the whole side that we could up to the wetlands.
Oh, boy. Do we have any standards on the, on the proposed fence? I mean, a, a chain link fence with slots on it with...
I mean, obviously, it's not preferred, and we will get to it, because I'm not, I'm not loving that. So my guess is that when this is all said and done, it's going to be something other than a chain link fence with slots.
Yeah, I mean, especially with the proposed architecture.
A hundred percent agree. I think they're going to have to put some kind of board-on-board situation up, but we're not there yet. So why don't we just let them hear from the public, and then resolve the issue with Shari, and then we can reconvene, like, in the beginning of next year?
Yeah. All right, Sal, do you have anything else before we open it?
No, we, we have some additional testimony, but it doesn't pay the waste of time of the board if we, if we have to overcome that one fundamental issue. I'm pretty certain we'll be back here, but...
Yeah.
I don't disagree, but I'm just saying, like, let's just get it resolved.
It's a friendly way of coming back.
Yeah.
Got it. All right. Well, at this time, I'll open it to the public if anybody wants to come up and have any questions for the applicant. And just try and speak as clear and loud as you can.
All right, just, uh...
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll just, uh, have to swear in. Uh, in the testimony you're about to provide, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. Uh, please state and spell your name for record, and give us your address.
Tom Baehny, B-A-E-H-N-Y, 11 Yellowbrook Road. My property backs up to this site, and it's all swampland. It's wet. It's a Madison Gawn Tributary runs through here. I want to know what kind of buffer he's going to give me, and what are they going to do to cut down on the noise. Now, when I'm in my backyard, I look at trees and woods. If they come down...
Well, so where are you on that screen?
I'm on your, I'm at the end of your property on your work road.
At the top.
At the top. So the corner, you see the screen, you see?
Yeah, I can see it.
Which, which property are you? Are you the, this one, or are you the one with the pool?
Um, no pool, no. There's actually no pool there either. They took it down.
I think he's at the end of the property.
I'm next to that one, all the way on the end. 11 Yellowbrook Road backs up to it. Billy Bar's driveway runs right alongside my property.
So that corner, you see the corner that's, that's grayish? That, that area?
Damn grayish. I can see it a little bit, yeah.
That's not being disturbed. Here, you want this?
It's better to see here, I think. On this side, this one.
Yeah. That area is not being disturbed. That's wetlands, and we can't touch that. So no tree removal, no disturbance of any kind.
Okay, so what are we going to do for sound? It sounds like you guys are going to have trucks stacked there, big pipes, big trucks?
We can't...
I sit in my backyard now, and it's peaceful and quiet. In the winter, I could look at the woods, even if the leaves are off the trees. In the summer, the leaves are on the trees. I don't see nothing but trees.
We can't put a fence on that property line because of the wetlands? We could probably put a fence inside the wetlands.
Uh, well, tell you what, I'd rather have, like, six-foot-high Christmas trees all across the back of my property, two rows staggered.
It's wetland.
So I couldn't see what's going on back there.
I think your back is wetlands too.
Yeah, it is wetland.
It is. But you have to put it on my property.
But we're not allowed to touch the wetlands.
I'm saying you'd have to put it on my property off the wetlands. In other words, 50, 60 foot, 75 foot on my property.
So this is a permitted use. We can't force them to put a presence on someone else's property.
What are they going to do to block the noise and, uh...
It's a permitted use, as I said, so...
Therefore, they have to comply with the noise requirements in terms of the decibel level, the consistent noise during the day, during the night. But other than that, there is no requirement within the township of them to have no noise whatsoever. It's a permitted use.
Yeah, and the board cannot grant relief for the noise. They're, uh, have to comply with the state regulations.
Yeah, comes over.
That fence going behind my property?
No, the fence ends at the wetlands. So the fence would end here.
Well, that's where I am, right there.
I understand. So the only thing I was suggesting to Mr. Plisakka we'd have to look at is, can we put a fence between the wetlands and the basin to kind of close off that area?
And where's this basin, right here?
Yes.
Old Billy Bar is going to love that.
I don't know who he is, but...
He lives right behind it. That's going to be...
We need a trap. Now, they're, they're designed differently. But we could look at that. I, I don't know if it would work, but we could try it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that'd sure help. I'd like it if you could do something for me.
We'll look at it. We'll be back, so we'll definitely have time to look at it.
I'll come and meet him.
And Mr. Plisakka, if you leave your phone number, Mr. Plisakka can meet you at the site.
All right.
Be happy to do that. Be happy to do that.
You have anything else, sir?
No, that's good.
Okay.
I, I think you ought to talk to Billy Bar. He's kind of sick. He didn't make it tonight.
I'll give Billy Bar a text later. I, I don't know who Billy Bar is, but...
I've been there 65 years. The township screwed up the road. That's all dump trucks all day long. I'd rather not the woods get screwed up behind me now. If you got your site thing on 177, like, 177, you got it, Sam?
All right. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? All right. Close that section.
So, Mr. Chair, could we carry it to the reord meeting and then...
For scheduling and then...
Figure out the date from there?
Yep.
Sure.
I know you can't do nothing with the wetlands, but you can't, okay, you can't do nothing on my property, which is probably 50, 75 foot.
Mr. Plisakka will contact you, and they will say, I don't, I can't answer.
I just want something to block the noise.
I just said...
Can we close this question?
Yeah. Um, Sal, we could, uh, just carry you to the fourth.
Do you want to be heard that night?
Or scheduled?
They're going to have time to work it out. How big are the trucks going to be? Wait, wait, wait.
All right, Sal. All right, we, we close this session, sure. So if you want to, maybe after the meeting. Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if we'll have to, we'll get up, what's the date?
January 4th. It's a Thursday?
Before we agree to anything. I got a feeling I can't do it anyway.
No? All right, so it's for scheduling purposes only?
Scheduling purposes only. That'll give John and Shari some time.
And then you'll get with me for a date to carry it that night?
Correct, before that date.
And I just need an extension of time then as well.
We'll, extension through the end of January. Is that good for now?
All right. So the applica, application of SP 1111, Kemetz, Inc., will be carried to the board's January 4th, right, January 4th meeting. For scheduling purposes only, all, uh, documents are still available in town hall during normal business hours.
And that's with no further notice, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's no further notice to, uh, property owners. So if you had, got something in the mail, this is your, you won't get another one. This is your notice here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the, uh, the last application of 2023. Case number SD 3012-391 Oak Glen LLC. This is a minor subdivision with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Before we do that, do we have time to go back to that resolution?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's do that. I apologize. Um...
You're right, I just wanted to try to...
Yeah, so there was one that Mr. Tannenhouse, um, we, we skipped over the resolution for case number SP 1110 Howell 360 LLC. It's a resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters Cristiano, Huser, Tannenhouse, Gager, Mercer, and Pike, and Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you indulging me in, in letting me take a look at the, the resolution. I've reviewed it. And the comment I have is for counsel on page 13, item number three. Says the applicant shall provide bollards or other perfect, protect, protective...
Says the applicant shall provide ballers or other perfect, protect, protective devices subject to review and approval by the board engineer and board planner. This was specific to the, the ballers because they had head-on parking into their clubhouse area.
Okay.
Does that need to be more specific or is that general statement enough to, to get the ballers to be?
The general statement's enough again, it's gonna be reviewed by, uh, by Laura anyway, so.
Fantastic. And I have no further objections and.
I will entertain a motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, SP dash 1110.
Second.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilman Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Huster?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, so, Sal, I already introduced this application, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. This is a minor subdivision application. The property's a little over twelve acres, property's in ARE six zone, six acre minimum. Both lots meet the minimum lot area, but there are bulk variance relief. There is bulk variance relief that will be required. Our engineer planner is Mr. Tim Lurie, I'd like to have him sworn in, please.
Yep. All right, the testimony you're about to provide, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
And Tim, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared in front of this board before.
Tim, you're good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just make sure you speak it to the mic so I can.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I mean, what do we have up there?
Uh, this is your.
Is it marked though?
Did he say that?
Well, that's.
Well, I'm sorry, hold on.
There's another one in there.
I was busy doing the.
That's the one with the two-hundred-foot buffer.
And this is what?
It's okay.
There should be, what else is on that drive?
If that's on the drive, I don't think I have that one.
That one just shows what, we put the two-hundred-foot buffer on for a stream corridor. It's basically the same. Yeah, let's work off, I can work off that first minor sub. I'll go back to, um, just the minor sub by itself without the houses shown on it, just so I can talk about the existing and et cetera. Sheet, yeah, that sheet right there, blow that up.
All right, so Tim, uh.
That's page one of A5.
Right. Can you orient the board as to where this property is located and what we're proposing?
Sure. This property is located on 391 Oak Glen Road. I have a pointer, but I don't want to go over your, your head.
You could move over here if you want, there's a, another.
Microphone over here.
Microphone over here, if it's easier.
Can't get that far?
Microphone's not working. There it goes. Sure.
Is that better?
Should be better.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Just you have that mic, so.
Sure, thank you. The property, as I stated, is located on 391 Oak Glen Road. The property consists of two lots today, which is lot thirty, thirty-three, which is, which is a landlocked lot, which is five-point-three acres. And then we have lot forty-one point oh-one, which is six-point-nine acres. There is a existing driveway easement that runs through the two lots and connects to the rear of the property. The site is mostly wooded. There's an existing house structure here, which will be removed. We have a stream that's located on the northern portion of our site. We also have wetlands, which are located on our northern portion of the site, which we have an LOI from DEP with a fifty-foot wetlands buffer. The, so what we're proposing to do is, is make both, make two new lots of these existing two lots, by reconfiguring both to be one six-point-two acres and the other one six acres that both front Oak Glen Road. We're gonna keep the driveway easement that runs through the property. And each lot will have a septic, septic and well. If we can go to the next sheet that shows the houses, I can get it to the proposed stuff. Sure, sure, I can use this one. The, as you can see, we're, we're gonna, we're locating the AR six zone. We have a minimum lot area of six acres. We have lot thirty-three oh-one, which is six acres. Then we have lot thirty-three oh-two, which is this lot, which is six-point-two acres. We have a lot with.
Is that compliance with our ordinance, Tim?
Yes, it's a six, six-acre zone.
Area, yes.
Area, yes.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just to cut through this. So the one lot that has the driveway easement that goes to the back has a, requires a variance for depth because they're at three-thirty-five, uh, and they're not compliant in that regard.
And what would be compliant?
That's just, this lot has a lot that.
Oh, this, so the V, right.
Uh, we need four-hundred feet.
Because of it.
Yeah.
You need four-hundred feet.
And then the one with the driveway has a coverage variance, whereas we permit five percent, they're at like six-point-seven percent. But if they remove that access easement, which they need to continue to provide, they would be compliant.
But they, but they need to continue?
Correct.
That's correct.
Other than that, the only thing that they need, they request a waiver for sidewalk, which I am opposed to, I think they should put in a sidewalk, which would then require some street trees. But other than that, it's two compliant lots, it makes the situation better. So I would request that they put in a sidewalk and the street trees. We grant the relief for the coverage and the depth and call it a day.
What's, what's the sidewalk situation over there now?
Well, it's incrementally happening.
No, I, I agree with you, Jen, yeah.
It's incrementally happening on Oakland, so like slowly but surely sidewalk.
The missing links are coming in.
Correct.
Got it.
So we need to keep, we need to keep the momentum going.
Counselor?
We, we have no issue with that. And to shortcut the testimony, we also have reviewed the reports of, that issued by all of the town professionals and board professionals, and we have no issue complying with all of their comments. So there's really no issues that are open, we've stipulated everything. We believe, you know, the variance relief is justified and it's certainly is far better. I'm providing planning testimony, but it's a far better.
I'll provide it, I'll provide it.
Okay.
If this is a far better alternative than the current, like, it's two lots to two lots, right? This is a way better configuration than what's existing. And the relief is based upon the unusual configuration at one lot on the depth and the necessity to provide the access to the rear. So there's more than enough justification for those variances. And again, I would ask for, and I think, Sal, you've agreed, to put in the sidewalk and the street trees. So other than that, there's no relief, unless Laura has something to add.
And Jen, the only place we can't do the sidewalks is where, I guess where that stream is, right?
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
And otherwise, yes.
The only thing I would ask for is that the subdivision, should the board actively be filed by MAP?
Yes, we'll follow my flag.
But other than that, there's really not much to this.
Anybody from the board? Any questions?
What of the public?
Anybody from the public? Yes, sir. All right, good evening.
Sean, uh, in the testimony you're about to provide, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear to the truth.
So it says, state and spell your name for the record and provide your address.
My name is Sean Connolly, it's S-E-A-N-C-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y. And my address is, uh, block forty-one, lot thirty-two on the rear of Oakland Road. I share.
Street address.
Uh, I don't have a street address at, currently.
He's the lot.
It's.
Oh, but the one that has the easement.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm block, uh, lot forty-one, lot thirty-two.
Got it, I got you.
My uncle over there.
Got it, got it.
He's the other, he shares the same boundary.
Understand.
So I'm, just have a few questions in regards to, uh, my wife and I, we were never notified of any of this that was going on. I just came, I came across through a neighbor that, uh, that we share. They were served papers, we were not. So I just had a couple.
What block and lot are you? At what lot?
I am lot, uh, block forty-one, lot thirty-two.
What, you're Sean, right?
Yes.
All right, yeah, certified letter was sent to you, whether you went and picked it up or not, I can't say.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Your mailing address is in Belmore?
It is, yes.
So they're only obligated to send it, they're not, they're not required to make sure you get it.
Okay, be that as it may, I understand that. I'm just saying that tonight is the first that I'm hearing of this, yeah. So, uh, I just have a few things that, uh, I would like some clarification on. It says here, um, that they are subdividing. I understand that they're trying to make compliance with the one lot that is not. It says a two-story, uh, two-story dwelling. What is the definition of two-story dwelling?
The house.
A two-story house, that's, that's the definition of.
Is it just like a single, like a?
It's a single-family house, two-story house, yes.
And, and the house itself is not designed yet. These are just illustrative of what can potentially go there, but it has to be a single-family house. Nothing else is permitted in that.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so in, I, I have, um, I see kind of where the lay, the layout of their proposed, um, the dwelling and then their pool house and pool, uh, the basketball court. Are those set in stone or, or they have the opportunity to?
They're not set, they're not set in stone, they're, that's just illustrative. Whoever buys this lot is gonna put what they want on it. And if they don't comply with whatever relief or with, with whatever requirements.
So those were basically just my concerns.
I understand, they would have to go to the zoning board at that point as a single-family home with variances to put up whatever they want. However, they are, by providing access to your property, their coverage is over what is permitted. If the dri- if that driveway back to your property wasn't there, all of this would be compliant. So they're just trying to provide an opportunity for whomever were to ultimately buy this property and then develop it to have, I mean, it's a six-acre lot, so they're able to put a number of stuff on it and still be significant distance away from you and your neighbor, et cetera. But there's no proposal to construct that, right, Sal? This is just illustrative for the boards.
Give you an example of what's.
Again, as I said, I'm just trying to get some, gain some clarity on what's moving forward. So is it, am I to understand that the west portion of this proposed two-story dwelling is facing Oakland Road? Is that?
Both, both lots would have access directly onto Oakland.
Okay. So is this, is this portion right here, is this proposed driveway going off the dirt lane?
No one's going onto your driveway.
I didn't, that's not what I asked.
Oh, I don't know, I don't understand your question.
So what, I'm, the question that I'm asking for clarification is currently right here is the existing houses there. Here's the proposed dwelling, right?
No.
Two-story dwelling. This right here isn't what that says right here, two-story dwelling.
Okay, so we need to get this for the record, so you need to be a little bit more descriptive based upon.
So wait, but Tim's gonna point to it, that, that's.
That's the proposed two-story dwelling?
That's correct.
Thank you. So I'm asking, on that wall that's facing Oakland Road, of that proposed two-story dwelling, is that gonna be the front of the house?
We don't know.
No, we have the, we have the front of the house right here.
That's what I, that's what I was asking for clarification.
But, but it's illustrative, it's not set in stone. Whoever buys that house, buys that lot, they can.
So what happens is?
Towards the zoning board.
No, they don't, they will just pull a permit to build a house.
Oh, and change the orientation to whatever they see fit.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what I was asking.
They can move it further into the lot too, right?
Correct.
All right, so basically, it is what it is, okay? All right.
Thank, I thank you for your time. You are welcome.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, close the public portion. Does anybody from the board have any questions? Laura, Jen, Shari? Sal, do you have any closing?
That's all we have, is Chair, we requested the board grant the approval.
Oh, well, I closed the public portion, but tis the season, I guess.
Thank you, I apologize.
Sorry.
As I walked away, it popped into my mind.
So on, on the proposed two-story dwelling that we, uh, were talking about on the right-hand side of the illustration here, are they, are they responsible? Because right now, it's a dirt lane where Oakland, paved Oakland hits the dirt pavement. Are they gonna be responsible for putting a, maybe like asphalt or something like that? So that, uh.
It's whatever that's required from the building department. We just have to apply for a building permit and determine what they're.
Well.
So the, so the requirement is that they have an apron out to Oakland Road and like a certain percentage, a certain distance off the road is paved?
Yeah.
Beyond that, no.
So the potential current owner will be responsible for that? I'm just asking for clarification on.
I would think probably, right?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if he has an access agreement, I don't know, I mean.
I don't really know what.
Is there an access agreement for utilization of this driveway?
There's an easement.
He has an easement.
There's a recorded easement.